You're on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law's Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Howard's Planning Board is being conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of a member of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder, persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress might do so by logging or calling in or calling as specified above.
Mr. Chairman, and Charlene, before you begin, I would ask if there are people on who are not talking right now, if you could mute your phones other than the board members, because we're getting somebody's either TV or radio feedback. It's gone. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And let me just do a roll call, so we'll make sure we've got everybody here.
Thank you, sir.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye. Here.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, here.
David Harris?
David Harris, here.
Joe McProwland, here. Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, here.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, here.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, here.
Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, here.
Okay, the first matter is to continue the Steve Gepoyan and Suavi Osev, PB 2020-02. I entertain a motion to continue to August 25th. Somebody make the motion, please.
Mr. Chair, this is Mary Maslowsky. I'd just like to recuse myself on this matter.
Okay. So if somebody else can make that motion, probably, please, to continue that matter to August 25th.
I'll make it, Joe. This is Craig. I'll make a motion to continue PB 2020-02, Steve Gepoyan and Suavi Osev, to August 25, 2020, no sooner than 6:30.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll start.
Dave Harris, second. Dave Harris, second. And I'm going to do a roll call vote. Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Hang on a minute, I've got to move some papers here. Okay. Craig Chadwick?
Craig, you have to say aye.
Oh, I didn't hear. Craig Chadwick, aye.
Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McProwland, aye. Mary Maslowsky?
Recuse.
That's right. Thank you. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Yeah, wait a minute, are you, he's, yeah, I have a note here that says you can't vote on the A and R.
Vote on the A and R. He's fine on this one, Joe.
Okay. Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay. Now that takes care of that. Now, we'll move on to item number two. This is that Steve Gepoyan and Suavi Osev, and we just put that one over, right?
Now, you're on to the public meeting, 2020.
Okay. This is the Herbert cell, Paul Sweetser, PLS representative, Gloria Green, TR, and Valerie G., and Herbert G. Bell owners. Applicant seeks endorsement of an approval required plan to reconfigure two lots pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 81P and Paragraph 40-9 of the Coteau's Town of Howard. The plan is entitled Plan of Land in Howard, Port Mass, dated June 30, 2020, for property located at 812 and 814 Route 28, MAP 24, Parcell T3 and T31 respectively. The parcels are in the R-R and C-H-1 zoning districts. And we will hear from Mr. Bell or his representative.
Paul Sweetser, here. The plan that's in front of you is just a reconfiguration of the two lots that are already existing. And what I've done is I've maintained the same area for both lots, that they do not change. They're exactly the same. And I've included a zoning compliance chart showing that it doesn't affect their frontage because they still have 150 feet of frontage or greater.
Let's take any questions. Anybody on the board have any questions with respect to it?
Do you want to hear from staff?
Yeah, I do in a minute. Okay. I don't hear any questions. We'll hear from staff. Thank you.
Thank you. So the board may endorse, may deny detailing why they are denying or taking or action. And with that said, as far as planning comments, this is a simple land swap. The lots' sizes remain the same, as Mr. Sweetser explained, and each lot will now have frontage on either Route 28, Parcel B, or Willow Street, Parcel A. Engineering and health had no comments, and we received no other comments from any other departments.
What's the planning director's recommendation?
Endorsement.
Okay. Does anybody who has any questions with regard to the matter?
Joe, it's Craig. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Charlene, this just might be a typo or my misunderstanding, but under planning, item number one, it says will now have frontage on either Route 28, Parcel B, or Willow Street, Parcel A.
They may be backwards, but each one lot will have frontage on Route 28 now completely, and the other will have completely have it on Willow Street.
So is it just swapped, so Route 28 is Parcel A, and Parcel B? Okay.
I don't have a copy in front of me.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay. We're prepared then to take a motion to adopt the findings. Either you vote positive on or negative.
Joe, this is Mary.
Go ahead.
I move that the planning board adopt the following findings. The fact the subplan does not constitute a subdivision as the way shown on the plan is a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective and has, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the use of the land, funding thereon, and through thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land in the buildings erected or to be erected thereon.
David Harris, second.
Okay. And this is a motion on an adoption of the findings?
Correct.
Okay. Please vote aye or nay, if you agree to adopt the finding.
I'm sorry, who's seconded, please?
David Harris.
Thank you.
Thirty-second.
Okay, we're good. We need a vote. Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McProwland, aye. Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay. Then we move on to an endorsement of the A and R. And can we hear from the planning director with regard to that?
I'm sorry?
Just a second, Joe.
You just need to, you need an endorsement on the, on, or a motion on the endorsement of the A and R.
So this is Mary.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I move that we endorse the A and R plan entitled Plan of Land in Howard's Port, Massachusetts, dated June 30, 2020, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, prepared by Paulie Sweetser, for property located at 812 and 814 Route 28, MAP 24, Parcell T3 and T3-1 respectively, and in the R-R and C-H-1 zoning districts.
Craig Chadwick, second.
David Harris.
Okay. We've got Craig Chadwick, second, and we'll have a roll call vote. Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Dave Harris?
Dave Harris, aye.
Joe McProwland, aye. Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay. So that puts us through that. Charlene, help me a little bit. Where am I going now?
You're going to Old Business, PB 2020-12, Eastward Home Business Trust, and then PB 2018-13, and 2020-12, Eastward.
And I wish to say thank you and say good night.
Bye, Paul.
Bye, Paul.
Bye.
Thanks, Paul.
See ya.
Aye. Okay. So this is a motion to endorse the plan? Excuse me. A motion to endorse the plan on PB 2020-12.
If I might, yes. The 20-day appeal period expired back on July 21, and there were no appeals taken, so they are seeking endorsement of this plan at this time.
Is there somebody there from Eastward Home?
Yep, Susan Ledoux is here.
Go ahead, Susan.
Yep. Basically, you've covered this item, and you approved the plan, the modification plan on May 12, and we had to wait up the Governor's order, and the appeal period ran and expired, I believe, last week, and the plan is in your hands for endorsement tonight.
Okay. Is there anybody on the board who has any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan.
Joe, this is Mary. I move that we endorse the modification, I move that we endorse the modification plan, PB 2020-12, Eastward Home Business Trust.
Craig Chadwick, second.
Thank you. And we'll have a roll call vote. Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Oh, I did, Craig.
Craig Chadwick did. Okay. Thank you, Duncan. Craig?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Hey, David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McProwland, aye. Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay. Okay. What about this 12 code road?
No, we're under Old Business, item number two.
Go ahead.
Complete release of covenant in exchange for cash surety. This is for, again, Eastward Homes Business Trust.
Yep, that's me again. Do you want me to talk?
It's Susan Ledoux.
Yes, Susan Ledoux.
Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you. We're requesting a release of the remaining three lots in the subdivision, and those are lots 2, 4, and 8, and basically a complete release of the covenant, including the road. And we do have the remainder of the sidewalk to complete, and then a complete final as-built plan showing that sidewalk. And we really like to, as I explained in my letter to you, we really like to install the sidewalk as we develop each house lot, so that we're not disturbing a finished sidewalk while we're developing a lot, building a house and such. So anyway, we proposed a post-surety. I did submit that, and the surety agreement, we also submitted that. So I believe the amount is $13,598 to be held by the board until we complete those items. And that's it.
Okay. So we need a motion on this, right?
Unless you want to hear from staff at all.
I'd love to hear from staff. Go ahead.
Okay. So just so it's in the record, the town engineer has reviewed the request, and a copy of his report is attached in your staff report. The recommended amount for the cash surety is $13,597.50. We rounded it to 598. You were provided a copy of the draft release. We did receive a check from Eastward, I think yesterday, in fact, that amount. So the applicant has provided the following, or, this is a little weird, you have to have the modification plan endorsed and reported along with the decision. As soon as that is done, assuming the board votes to release the document, we can then provide the covenant release documents and the treasurer's acknowledgement to the applicant. So the recommendation is that you do make a motion to approve and sign the full release of covenant. We will hold the actual release until such time as we have documentation back that the modification plan has been reported, but it is staff's recommendation that you do approve this.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the full covenant release of cases PB 2018-13 and PB 2020-12, Eastward Home Business Trust, for the vastest of Howard's subdivision and modification plans in exchange for performance cash surety in the amount of $13,598 to be held in an interest-bearing account of Howard's Town Borough. The signed covenant release shall not be relinquished to the applicant until the modification plan and decision, the case PB 2020-12, are recorded at the parcel county registry of deeds, and said recording documentation is submitted to the planning office.
Second.
Can I get a second to that motion?
Duncan Berry, second.
Thank you. And any questions or comments about that, about this motion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McProwland, aye. Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay. Takes care of that. Now...
Chairman, if you can, I'm going to ask if you would take the West Howard, ACC discussion out of order, because I think everybody else on this call is on for that matter. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Susan. Bye-bye.
All right. Just give me a minute here, Sean, I know I can tell you that stuff in front of me. Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Do you want me to just kind of jump in here?
Yes, please.
Okay. Happy to do that. So in your package, you did receive a July 20 version of the document, and you also received emails from Sarah Kordjev and comments from Lady Board Member Duncan Berry, and his comments were actually based on the July 7 working document. As we discussed at the last meeting, time is kind of of the essence in getting something to the town meeting in September. We did discover that there is not a six-month extension eligible, there's only a 90-day extension eligible from that December 4 meeting. And the face you just made, Craig, is exactly the one I made when I got that news. So not what we wanted to hear. However, I had an excellent meeting with Cape Cod Commission staff, and I think we've got all of them on here. We've got Liz, and we've got Martha, and I believe we have Sarah and also Chloe on. I'm not sure if we have Sarah on. But we had a really, really good conversation yesterday about what is the minimum that we need to do to get the implementing regulations on the town meeting and to the selectmen so they can do what they need to do. And keep in mind, the selectmen also can be the sponsors of this zoning, these zoning amendments, which actually gives us a little bit more wiggle room. So it's not make or break that your board, the planning board, be the sponsors of this, but it can be the board of selectmen. They have the right to do that. And in fact, it might make a little bit more sense, because they were actually the nominators for this. So based on the conversation that I had with Cape Cod Commission staff yesterday afternoon, I put a draft together and sent it immediately out to them at the end of the day. They sent comments back, and basically, and I sent out very, you know, late today, a July 28 version of the document, which I'm sure a lot of you have an opportunity to read. I also sent it to a butters list that I have, which ironically, I thought only had 45 people, it actually, I believe, has 69 people on it. So it went out to a lot of people. You know, a couple folks are on. I know Sally Urbano is on. So with all that said, the newest version calls down to what Cape Cod Commission staff and what I believe is the minimum requirement to get this to satisfy what we need to satisfy with the Cape Cod Commission and the Assembly of Delegates as our regulatory document. So what I'm going to do is just say a couple things that came out of the document at this time. And one of those... Someone answer their phone? The design guidelines came out, because those are not actually a requirement of what the minimum needs to be. Doesn't mean that they won't later, because I think that they are critical. So that, for the time being, has come out, as have review procedures. What we're going to base review procedures on primarily are the site plan waiver provision in this, existing already in the zoning bylaw, and then the site plan approval process, which is already existing in the zoning bylaw. The only addition we would have for review would be review of additions, and I'm going to try and find it here, of 250 feet or less, if somebody wanted to do, wanted to do an addition. And that review would be by staff designated by the planning board. Ideally, it would probably be the town planner, whoever that may be, when all of this comes down. But the town planner or the designated of the planning board would have the authority to review and approve where, provided that no, there's no demolition of any historic structures, and that's not in here, but we need to add that. And if, like, only if it meets all the requirements and review standards as outlined in what is the new section, 325-154. So there are extensive review standards that are included, and that's in the newer document. In the older document, dated the 20th, you would find that, actually, it was the same, 325-154, starting on the top of page 11. So I actually have a meeting with interim town administrator on Thursday. We had a conversation. I caught him at the end of the day a couple days ago, and I explained to him how the timeline's working, how it's not working for us, and what we need to do to be able to get this so we can have it on the town meeting, which is now September 26, which is a Saturday. And I believe it's in the morning, Mary, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure if you know the particulars on that.
I don't.
Okay. The last I heard is it will be outdoors, and it will be in, start in the morning, I believe. So that's why it's on a Saturday, so we can do that. A couple communities have done that, and it's worked out really, really well. So if this is some, oh, and the other thing I wanted to say is, we have pulled together a very quick, and notice we'll go out again, to the email list that I have. We are planning to have a public workshop next Tuesday at 1:30 in the afternoon, and we're going to invite every, all the people on the email list. If there's going to be a forum of the board, then it would need to be posted. So I would recommend that the board members possibly not participate in that meeting. Leave it up to myself and Cape Cod Commission staff to do a presentation. It will be live broadcasted, I believe, but also it will be available for you all to watch later if you want to. And what that meeting is going to do is basically what we were going to do back in March was to give an overview of what this all means, what the minimum requirements are, how we need to proceed with this, and then also have this document available for everybody, the latest and greatest document, to explain, these are the minimum requirements that we need to have for this to move forward. So assuming that all goes well on the 4th, and folks are happy with it, we'll make any changes we feel are necessary. The drop-dead date to get it to the board of selectmen for their consideration and to refer back to the planning board is August 19. So that's where you guys kind of fall out of the equation as the referring entity, because there's, the turnaround to get you a document that you would need to review by the 11th is going to be a little bit potentially difficult, but I may be able to get it to you. That the meeting on the 11th for you guys is going to be a very, very full meeting as well. Never mind this document. So at the very least, what we have right now is a document that would meet the minimum standards that we need to have for implementing regulations, and the sections that we've taken out, the design guidelines and some review standards, would be worked on after the September town meeting, assuming all of this gets approved at the September town meeting, then we will still continue to work towards those design guidelines and some other, you know, important parts of this, but that are crucial to the implementing part of this. I know I've said a lot, it's a little bit confusing. One other thing that we also discussed for the time being is that this would be an hopefully district. We would not do away with the CH1 zoning district. This would be an overlay district, and those portions of the property in the overlay district would still be able to utilize this document. So if, you know, the front 200 feet is on CH1, and you've got another 50 feet, you would be able to use that additional 50 feet as part of the overlay district towards the development that you want to do. towards the development that you want to do under the regulations. So it doesn't restrict anything. And frankly, we may want to think about just leaving it as an overlay district. But if later on it's decided that, no, let's do away with the CH1 and just have the West Harwich Special District, that can still happen in the future. But for now, it would be an overlay district similar to the, the, um, the Harwich Port Village Overlay District and the Harwich Center Overlay District. But in those districts, the overlay is that you may do this. If you want to do this, you may do this. For this, um, for the West Harwich, um, Special District, this is a you must do this. Similar to the Six Pond Special District, which is an overlay district, but you have to abide by the requirements of the Six Pond Special District, even though it is also zoned primarily on RR. So it would be a must, not a may, or a shall, not a may. And, and that's kind of the, the, the overview at this point. I just dumped a lot on you. You may have a lot of questions or you may be so confused that you don't even know what to ask at this point.
Yeah.
At this, at this point, I'd like to recognize Duncan Berry. Duncan, do you have some things you want to say about this?
Yes. Well, first of all, I think, uh, kudos to Charlene and to Sarah and, and, uh, the commission for being able to generate this document. It's really great. The first version was great, the second, I mean, this is fantastic. My quick comments would be, you know, I, uh, I think it's probably, uh, the big questions for me are how, if, let's say we all get, we go through this and it, and it comes through, but we're missing kind of the teeth of the whole thing, that the purpose of this work, design guidelines and the review procedures. That was kind of really where the rubber hit the road. What is the procedure then going forward? Let's say this does get, you know, sent to the board of selectmen. It does get on the town meeting, it does get passed and we want to introduce those things later. How do we do that? Is there, is that another town meeting article downstream? Or is it a more kind of a legalistic procedure of tweaking? I don't know.
No, it would, it would be another, um, it would have to go back to town meeting to be further amended with those added elements to it. But assuming this is approved in September, then that would be the first thing that I would jump on. Actually, I jumped on that before then to come up with that language so that it is, um, you know, as, as near complete as, as humanly possible before I leave the end of November. So, you know, my goal would be to work on those elements, you know, get the public input, have that time to really scrutinize those and with those forward. But it would have to go to the next town meeting, would be in, in next May. Assuming we don't have another crisis pandemic or something.
And Charlene? Charlene?
Yes, Joe.
My question is, um, is, is your, you're, you're, you're leaving in November as a drop dead, you're leaving, right?
Uh, yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Sounds with a really big smile.
Well, I understand, I understand and good luck to you. My, my only other question is, um, is, is the town administrator working on getting a replacement?
Um, I have, I'm actually, um, submitting my letter of intent to retire the end of this week or on Monday. So until they have that in hand, um, they can't really do anything.
I understand.
I need to get some of my, you know, puzzle pieces in the right spaces before I could actually do my letter of intent to, to retire.
I understand. Okay. Now, a couple of other things. Who is that, please?
It's Mary. Joe, when you have a second, I have a question or comment.
Duncan still has more to.
Go ahead. That's all right. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay. So thanks, Joe. My only comment was basically on Duncan's concerns. I mean, I do somewhat share Duncan's concerns and, you know, the, the design guidelines are part of the, the reason that we did this in the first place. But I would rather see us go forward with lesser now that meets the requirements. Because if we, I do think if we try to put too much on this fall town meeting that is really going to be shortened as much as possible because of the COVID situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been reading about that, yeah.
I'd rather see us go with what's going to meet the requirements for the Cape Cod Commission. Because if it, if we try to do too much and it fails, we've got to try and go through the whole process again. So, I mean, I think we should try and capitalize on what, on where we are in the process. And then if that allows us to, you know, obviously still have to do more work, but get the basics in and then continue the work for maybe spring town meeting or, um, you know, the next best possible time. That seems to make more sense to me than trying to do too much all at once.
Totally concur.
Go ahead, Greg. This is Dave. This is Dave. I have a question when you get time.
Go ahead, Dave. David Harris?
Yeah, if we, uh, we go to the town meeting with the scaled down version without design standards and so on, and then have to wait till the next town meeting for the fine tuning and additions, does that mean that no development can occur in the, in this district during that whole period?
No, it's my understanding and, and you should correct me if I'm wrong. But the moratorium, once the, um, adopting regulations are, are implemented, then the moratorium would cease.
That's right. Sarah or Jeff have questions.
Sarah or Jeff is available. Sarah, do you want to pipe in on that?
Sure. I, I'll just say that, um, what Charlene said is essentially correct. That once the town has adopted these, or some implementing regulations and the Cape Cod Commission has certified that they meet the minimum standards that were laid out in the DCPC's decision, then the moratorium does come to an end. And you will begin to then review development proposals under these new implementing regulations. So there's, uh, yeah, so, so things will move forward at that time. If I, if I could, I wanted to just make one other comment that, um, what Duncan said about the design guidelines and the review procedures being taken out of, of, um, what you're now sort of considering to bring to town meeting. We don't consider those two items to have been the meat of the, of the West Harwich Special District, partly because even though we took out the review procedures that were in the last draft that you looked at, you do have, in, in their place, you would use review procedures that the town currently has that are, we think equally strong. And then the idea of taking out the design guidelines, those have always been envisioned as kind of supplemental to revised dimensional regulations for this district. And the dimensional regulations are still in the draft that you're looking at. And those were perhaps the number one required item in the DCPC decision.
So I assume, Charlene, hang on, I assume Charlene that, uh, that you will be meeting and speaking with her to put together a final draft?
Well, we're, we're going to have the meeting, um, next Tuesday with the property owners, the Butters, you know, whoever logs into the meeting to explain this, explain everything and go over the document with them. I know that was one of the things that we, you know, we really sold it that there would be public participation in this. So we really want to hear from, from those folks, um, you know, how they feel about it, what they think. You know, we'll explain why we've taken the design guidelines out, but that we will still be working on them to put them in at a later time. So, um, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
All right.
This is Craig. I have a question, sir.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you. Last time we met, I had asked about inclusion. How much lead time was required for inclusion in the warrant for the town meeting in September? And, um, whether the selectmen would approve it or not? And I think Charlene, you said you were going to talk with Joe or somebody about that? Or you would ask, well, I think you would ask the question and not had the answer yet. So I wondered if, if you had an answer yet.
As I said previously, the drop dead date is, is August 19th.
Right. Not, not a question about the timing, but a question. There was discussion at numerous board of selectmen meetings that I watched where they talked about paring down the warrant to essentially only absolute requirements. And I think they had a financial bent to them and they were going to try and get rid of, um, other items that could hold over until, I guess, May. And I wondered if there was any further, in, in other words, has the board of selectmen approved and said, yes, put it on the warrant for September?
They can't do that until they get a document. And the drop dead date for me to get something to them for their review and for inclusion in the town meeting warrant is August 19th. They will then decide what they want to do.
So they can't even tell us right now, yes, you can include your.
Greg, I don't know. I, I don't know. This is their, they are the nominating entity.
Understood.
You know, but they need something to weigh in on. They need to be.
Well, the thing to weigh in on is we, you know, the DCPC has been approved by the Cape Cod Commission and we want to, we, the planning board or, uh, who, whatever.
You don't have to be the sponsor of the article is, is what I explained earlier. The selectmen, the planning board, or the zoning board of appeals, or by petition, can be the sponsors of a zoning amendment article. So we can bypass you guys for the time being because they meet more often. So it's, it's easier to get it to them in a final document so that they can be the sponsors of this. They will then refer it back to the planning board for public hearings. And your public hearing on this would then be on September 22nd.
Okay. I'm sorry for being so sick on this, but.
No, no, no. I think you're exactly right.
I can't seem to understand why, well, I couldn't pick up the phone tomorrow and call Larry Ballantyne and say, Larry, um, can you check the list?
I don't know if I brought them or not. I only have contact with the town administrator.
Okay.
So that's the only constitution I can have.
Okay. I guess I could pick up the phone or anybody could pick up the phone, uh, and call Joe and say, this is an item that we, I don't have a deal for yet, but we want to put it on the warrant. Can we do that without you seeing it yet, just knowing the implementing directions for the, uh, West Harwich Special District? Just ask the question.
So, this is Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
So Craig, you're putting the cart before the horse, um, you know, with all due respect. So the board of selectmen can't say that, yeah, we're going to support something if they don't know what they're supporting. And I think Charlene's point is that they were the sponsors of the DCPC. So knowing the timing, chances are they're going to want to put something on, on the, on the town warrant. But without seeing something, how could they actually vote and say, yes, we're going to put something on a warrant if they don't have the document to even look at and approve? And by having them be the sponsor, Charlene is buying the town more time to get through it. Because if we're the sponsor, we have to vote on it, then refer, and, and then the change is really almost stopped. We would then have to vote on it, refer it to the selectmen, for the selectmen to refer it back to us. By going directly to the selectmen, we buy a couple of extra weeks to get a, a better version, a more final version in, because then they can vote on the 19th to refer it back to us. And that allows us to maximize all of the time heading up to town meeting.
Exactly.
So it will give them a better document to vote on and will give everybody more time to work on it. Does that make sense?
Charlene?
Thank you. Hold on. Thank you, Mary. But I, I use the word, I'm putting the cart before the horse because we're asking the selectmen to support an item on the warrant. And we're not asking them to support it. We're not asking them, are you in favor or are you not? What we're asking is, can you ask, put this question on the warrant to ask the members, attendees at the town meeting?
So Craig, Craig, it's the selectmen's warrant. So they can decide what to do, nobody else, right? So, so it's up to them ultimately regardless. So I think by giving everybody the most amount of time, it's the best that we can do. And to give them the best document possible at the, at the, as long, with as much time to work on it so that it gets refined and then they ultimately are going to make their decision whether it's going to go on a warrant or not. You know, I, I personally think we proceed as if they are going to put it on the warrant and then it's still up to them later on, they can, until they vote, they have the right to vote. So they could, they could tell you yes now and change their mind in, in three weeks anyway.
Charlene?
I'm not going to beat a dead horse.
Yes, Joe.
When would you expect that you're going to have a final draft of, of this document ready?
I'm hoping, um, as soon after the, the public presentation meeting that, uh, next Tuesday, the 4th, as soon after that as possible.
Okay. Because I, I, I at least as one member of the planning board would like to see it before it goes to the board of select.
You may not have that opportunity. Remember that this, that the selectmen were the sponsors of this. And I work directly for the town administrator. So in my conversations, in my conversations with him, the interim town administrator knows the importance and the critical timing of this. And that's why we looked at the timeline of when the drop dead date is for me to get a document to him for inclusion on the town, uh, on the selectman's agenda so that they can move forward with this.
I'm not trying to stop that. I'll slow it down even. But, but once you have it together, uh, I'd, I'd appreciate a phone call so I can come up and read it.
I sent you electronically, um, a pretty.
I haven't.
Document today.
I have, oh, oh, well, I haven't got, I, I haven't checked my, my, my email yet, so it's probably in my.
The 28th, there's going to be a few tweaks based on some additional comments that I did receive, um, from other commission staff, just a few tweaks, nothing substantial, just some clarifications. And then that is, that will be what we present to the property owners and the Butters and everybody else next Tuesday. That's what we will be discussing with them. And I know Duncan has been really patient and still has some comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Go ahead, Duncan. So, yeah, just not, I don't have that much. I just wanted to continue with the line of thinking here, um, with regard to, uh, first of all, saying that if this as an overlay district is able to accomplish in West Harwich, the overlay districts have accomplished in the center and in the port, we got nothing to worry about.
Exactly.
That's what I, it's like, this is nothing special. This is actually, you know, terrific. I do think it would be interesting, however, if we, if there were, um, two items that I have a little bit of concern about. One is that I would love to see in section 325 dash 145 intent, in this sentence that says to encourage and incentivize, I would say retention, comma, presentation, comma, creative reuse. Those are two words that I would add. But it, it makes it explicit what's kind of implicit. I would just assume like, get all the cards on the table. This is what we want. This is the intent.
Duncan, I heard bits and pieces of that. If you can actually send me what you just said via email, that would be great. If I think I heard what you said, I agree with you 100%.
It's just two words. The second question I had was, um, about the article or item 147 definitions, historic structures. There are some, there are a handful, maybe, and I think I sent that on that prior note. They made the 100-year cutoff, but they have aesthetic, historic and cultural value. I think it's worth our, at least having a conversation about whether or not they, we can get some of these things on that, uh, properties inventory list. list. And that's an off, so we could have that conversation. I just wanted to put that up in in that one right now. But other than that, I know that Dave wants to talk too.
If I can address...
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. And in fact, I'm wondering if, and I've seen this done, we may be able to call out those parcels specifically under the historic structures, that in addition to, the following properties shall also be considered a historic structure.
There's one house that just came to my attention. I honestly had no idea. It's a Craftsman-style house that has had some work on the front. So it's from, I think, like 1925 or '27. You know, it's not, no, it just slipped through the cracks. That's a great, you know, we want to hold on to that.
So, I mean, I think we can add historically significant structures, additional structures to that. There was a Frank Lloyd Wright in there, you know, which is less than 100 years old. Obviously, we'd want to protect that. You know, there may be, there are structures in there. I don't think Wright would fit well in there, but that's a whole nother thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Duncan, I know you, I know you've been working on this for a long time. So please, excuse me, stay close to Charlene on between now and our next meeting, would you please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. I have a question.
Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. Duncan, that last item that you mentioned, the historic structures, I had a question in my mind about the same thing. There, as we move forward, if I understand, one of the criteria is 100 years old to make the list of historic properties inventory list. Is that the correct understanding?
That's my working understanding.
Okay. So what happens when, if there's a house today that's 98 years old, two years from now, or three or five, the house becomes historic because it hit its 100th birthday? How is that covered in this zoning change or loss to, you know, make sure that those meet, fall into the same guidelines that we're trying to establish for what exists out there now and meets that criteria today, but doesn't until three years from now meet that criteria?
That's the question. That's why I think the supplemental list might be an interesting...
Right. But also, we...
That'll get you what, you know, what's there, that you're aware of now. What about those others that are, as I said, going to get, have their 100th birthday three years from now?
Right.
The demolition delay bylaw triggers automatically any structure that is over 100 years old, regardless of whether it's on that list or not. And there are some out there that have slipped the cracks and didn't make it onto that list. But if it is deemed to be 100 years old, then it has to go through historic review if they're going to demo it or do a renovation on it. So, you know, that's, maybe we can reference that as another trigger. It might muddy the waters a little bit.
This is Sarah Cordjev. Could I comment also?
Yeah, I was just going to ask for you, Sarah.
Just, I think the purpose of having, referring to the town's historic inventory list in that definition is that your inventory list is really a living document. And the historical commission and the town has the ability to add new structures to that list at any time with the assistance of either a consultant or, or actually volunteers in the town filling out the inventory forms that Mass Historical Commission then reviews. So you can keep it up to date pretty easily. I think it makes a lot of sense, though, to identify any additional buildings you're aware of now in this DCPC definition.
Anybody else have anything to say about this?
Another question, by name, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. What's the process, assuming everything goes as we just planned for? And this does go, the implementing directions, for lack of a better word, does go to a town meeting in September and is approved. Does that, because it's a zoning bylaw, have to go to a town election or a townwide approval process?
Yeah.
No, it's just...
No, it would get, go to the Cape Cod Commission. They would have to vet it to make sure it complies. And it has to go to the Attorney General's office for final approvals to make sure we did everything we were supposed to do. And, and that's pretty much what they do at the AG's office, is make sure that we posted a property notification, had copies of it available here, there, and everywhere. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The Attorney General's procedures are primarily for procedure rather than content?
Primarily, yes. Occasionally, they'll get into content, but generally, it's just procedure.
And Ford, do you know Charlene, or does anybody know, does this require a two-thirds vote?
Two-thirds vote. All zoning requires a two-thirds vote.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Charlene?
Yes, sir.
What's our August meeting day?
You guys meet on August 11th and August 25th.
Okay. Okay. And the reason I'm asking is, we were supposed to reorganize tonight. I'm not going to do that. We'll, I'll put it over to August 11th, and we'll vote on chair and vice chair on August 11th. Anybody have a problem with that?
Are we done with this discussion?
I still have a couple of questions. I apologize.
Craig, you have a couple of questions about what?
The, the item that we're talking about, the West Harwich Special District.
Go ahead.
One of the items, if I can find it, says...
Which version are you looking at, Craig?
This is the one that you sent tonight.
Okay.
And I don't think it changed from the previous one, and I...
As long as I'm looking at the same document you are.
Okay. I cannot find it at the moment. But it prohibits demolition of historic structures.
Um, no. Nothing in here actually does prohibit. We're trying to protect them as much as possible, but I'm not aware that anything in here actually prohibits.
I think I know what he's referring to. This is Sarah Cordjev.
Which one, Sarah?
So my, I believe you might be referring to the change of pre-existing non-conforming structure, where we have different review procedures for different scale projects.
Right.
And what we have identified is that in those two sort of simpler review processes, one, the staff review for very small projects, and secondly, the site plan waiver for sort of moderately small projects. In those, we've specified that in those two types of lesser review, you cannot include demolition of a historic property or any partial demolition, that any project that would include partial demolition of a historic property would have to go through the longer, more complete review process.
Thanks, Sarah.
This one exists, right? That's the standard overlay district language that we have in the center of the port, right?
I think maybe, but I'm not sure. I, I'm...
Just looking at what they, what they have to go through for the new structure up across from the old hardware store. It sounds like that's the same procedure that Sarah's...
Joe, this is Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
That's because of the historic district. If you're talking about 7-Eleven Main Street?
Oh, you're right. Okay, gotcha. Gotcha.
That's a historic district. That had nothing to do with the, with the Howard Center Overlay District. We asked them and encouraged them to use the overlay district to get the streetscape, but that's historic district. So if we're not, at this point with the DCPC, we haven't talked about whether, whether there was going to be a historic district added in there. We're just talking the overlay for, for the design consideration and the critical planning concerns. So different whole story with them. The demolition delay bylaw covers across, all the way across town, not just in the, in the historic district. But, but their review as far as aesthetics and concerns is, was strictly because it was historic district.
So, so this wording, which I did find, which Sarah alluded to, item B, number four, there shall be no demolition of a historic structure, is just, if I understood correctly, is, is just for the specific pre-existing non-conforming structures. In other words, somebody couldn't come in and say, I want to demo that under this review. But they could demo it if it went before, married before the historic commission, it was 100 years old, and it hit the, you know, one-year delay or 12 months delay, demo delay, then they could demo it. Is that correct?
A demolition of a historic structure under this bylaw would not be allowed to go under part A or part B. It would have to go under part C. And maybe we need to tweak that language to reflect on that. But that is the intent there, is for, if you don't want to demo anything, and you want to do 250 square feet, and you meet all the other requirements, it can be done at the staff level. If you are doing 1,000, up to 1,000 square feet of either footprint or exterior of building, and you're not demoing anything, you can, you can apply for a waiver of site plan to do that. Beyond that, you have to do the full site plan review. So I think we do need to tweak that language under C, you know, to also say, or if there's any demolition of a historic structure.
So Charlene, just for clarification, I just want to put it out there. Under our demo delay bylaw, it includes even a partial demolition. So if somebody's cutting a door into a wall, that's considered demolition. So, for example, there was a situation where an addition was being added to the side of, of an existing structure that was 100 years of age, and they were cutting a door on what was an exterior wall but was becoming an interior wall, we considered that demolition. But under the, under that bylaw, and they had to come to the historic commission. So just pointing that out for clarification.
No, I'm glad you did that. And we may have to, to figure out a little bit clearer. And I'll work with Sarah and the commission staff to try and, to figure out the proper language we may need to use there to make the, to differentiate between the two.
You know, in the interest of making definitions similar, there's a couple of organizations that provide definitions of terms like demolition. One is the American Society for Testing Materials, the other is the International Building Code Council. So those are good places to start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another question.
All right. Anybody else have anything more to say about this?
I do.
Obviously, you haven't been thinking about it.
It's...
We're supposed to, we...
I do, I was curious. I'm sorry for all the questions, and I'll be honest, I feel...
No, 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 no. That's why you're on the board.
Okay. But I feel that we're kind of, we're kind of rushed in our ability as a board to go through and discuss various items and issues that people might have. I know on the 4th, you're going to have the, the public feedback. Hopefully, that will be not just the abutters, but also maybe people from East Harwich who have an interest. I don't know. But it sounds like the planning board is not going to be there because we're not going to notice it as a meeting. So I do feel a little rushed in that, and I'll just throw it out. I understand the time crunches that we're explaining, and that we should try to do as much as we can to make this work. But I want to make sure that everybody gets represented, and that we've given a lot of thought to this, and to the words and what they mean, not just for now, but going into the future as well. So having said that, that's my piece. But my question is, and if I understood correctly, Charlene, I think you said as you were explaining, or maybe it was Sarah, but there's, in this regulation in the DCPC and what the implementing guidelines, we're saying, I think, Charlene, you said, that it all refers to you shall, not you may. You shall, you must, not you can if you want to. And so if I understood that correctly, you also said that the Harwich Fort Overlay District and the Harwich Center Overlay District do not have that, but Six Ponds does.
Yes.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious why, it would seem to me that West Harwich is closer to Harwich Fort and Harwich Center than it is to the Six Ponds District in terms of...
The mechanism we're using, not, not, not proximity.
Well, no, I don't mean proximity. I mean, the Six Ponds District, in my way of thinking, and I could be totally wet, was to, for some part of it, to prohibit residential growth around ponds and waters and six ponds and conservation land and all that kind of stuff. So I'm not saying because Harwich Fort and Harwich Center are closer to West Harwich than Six Ponds. I'm just asking, how come two of these districts are being, or how come the West Harwich District is saying you must, you must, and the other two districts are saying you can if you want to? I just don't understand why the difference.
Under the DCPC, it is a must. And that's what is creating this. So this is our...
Okay.
The Six Ponds is a DCPC that was created 20 years ago.
And the Harwich Center, Harwich Center and the Harwich Fort are not?
Yeah. And that's why, yeah.
Sorry. I got it.
Okay.
Charlene?
Yes, sir.
One last question. At some point, when are you going to have a new draft ready?
After the August 4th meeting. Well, I'll have a little couple tweaks. I'll send you what I get, and it'll be posted on the website. So that information is always available. So the most...
Are you going to send it to me like around August 4th or 5th?
Well, you may get a revision even before then for the...
Okay.
So always look at the top of the page in bright red, hopefully if you have color printer. If not, still big on the top, is the date draft working document for discussion purposes only.
Charlene, I assume you want comments on the one we received, I emailed today?
Um, yes. If people have comments, and I know, you know, some of you have weighed in, and I've incorporated or not, some comments people have had. But yeah, if individual board members, definitely send them to me. I, I don't have a lot of time over the next, actually this week, for a lot of phone calls, unfortunately, because of my, my meeting schedules. But certainly, if you can shoot me an email with any recommend, recommended, you know, changes, or if you see something grammatical wrong or typos, let me know.
All right. Okay. Anybody else? We were supposed to reorganize tonight, but I think we spent a long night. So I think I'll put that over to August 11th.
You still have a discussion on the multifamily bylaw?
I don't know. I don't know.
Thanks, commission staff.
Thank you, Wild.
You're very welcome.
What are we looking at, Charlene?
This is, no, we, we went out of order, but it's old business, item number three, continued discussion and possible vote on referral of amendments related to multifamily dwelling zoning bylaws to the Board of Selectmen. So in your package, you have documented dated July 22nd, 2020.
Hang on. 3B, 3.
3B3. I got 3B1, 2, and 4. I'll be goddamned if we can find 3.
Not darned.
You're recording.
Oh, Bowie. Yeah, I got it. I got it, I got it.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So, from the last meeting, got a lot of comments from the board members. Also, a couple of board members got in touch with me individually, and we went over it. Particularly, I want to call out Dave Harris. Thank you, thank you, thank you. He provided a lot of great information that was very helpful. So in your packet, you actually had two documents related to agenda item 3, Roman numeral 3B3. One was one that starts article to see if the town will vote to. That's the actual zoning amendment proposal. The other document was just a tool to help see where these changes occur and how they occur in the document. I also gave you the definition of building structure height because that came in to play on this. So in this document, and I also, also kudos to my assistant, Aladen Bantha, who went through this with a fine tooth comb, discovered areas where we were missing language, other areas where we just needed to clarify things or where we were able to neaten up the version to make it actually a little bit shorter. So huge kudos to her for doing that. So essentially, if you want me to write, we do this fairly quickly. So running through the first page of the document, which is the actual article. So the definition did not change. The table, which is 32515, Table 1, that did not change. On line 18 through 22, 22 is the table. Before, we had all the MRLs listed and everything else, and we realized, wait a minute, we didn't need to add all that. We just needed a, all districts were permitted, permitted by use special permit, use multifamily. So we just were able to clean that language up. It says the same thing, just in a much cleaner format.
Okay, I see.
Going to page 2, this line 29, and I realize putting the line numbers really helps. Line 29 and then line 31. Way more stuff in there than we actually needed to. But we also did discover in the RH, let me get this right, RH2 and RH3 districts, local capability was also permitted. So we streamlined that a little bit. So line 29 through 31, which is the height bulk regulation, we cleaned that language up. We did do one thing, which I know Mr. Stoltz probably will not be happy about, but the permitted height, we did have it 40. But after numerous conversations with a variety of people, architects, building officials, things like that, we went to three and a half stories rather than three stories because it was pointed out that that half story may be very critical for basement purposes or dormer attic. So that half a story actually was important from an architectural standpoint, and it didn't curtail creativity of a building that if we only had it three stories, may have been stymied. So we did add that extra half story in there based on a number of conversations that I had with a variety of folks.
Bill Stoltz, you want to make a comment about that?
I do, and I do disagree. I still think it should stay at three stories instead of three and a half.
Then, well, you know, we're the ones that are making this decision, right? Not the planning team. So if you think it should be three, we'll make it three, depending on what other people have to say.
But with all due respect, at the last meeting, the only one who commented that they were adamant about the three stories was Mr. Stoltz.
I understand.
So you're right, it's.
If he wants to, if he wants to make a motion, if he wants to make a motion.
No, you don't need a motion. Just, you all need to say, yes, I'm good with three. I'd prefer three and a half. You don't need a motion on any of this because we're not ready for that. But we need something.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments about what Bill Stoltz just had to say?
Mr. Dave Harris, I prefer three and a half.
So do I, Dave.
This is Alan Peterson.
All right, anybody else?
This is Alan Peterson. I would go with three and a half.
Okay, all right. Anybody else?
Duncan.
Okay.
What, can we poll everybody?
I thought it was three and a half.
Yeah, no, I think we have, they've all spoken up.
It's Mary.
Anybody wants to be heard, hasn't had a chance, go ahead.
It's Mary Jo.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would actually prefer the three and a half as well. Sorry, Bill.
All right, anybody else on the board wishes to be heard, would be guided to this? Okay, go ahead, Charlene.
Okay, so, um, we came, oh, in line 40, and this is, this was at the suggestion of Dave, and it reads much better, no outside stair case shall be used to furnish primary act. Oh, no, that's not the one. It's here somewhere. Oh, it's on, it's on the next page. So not much changed as far as the rest of Page 2. And on Page 3, which is 59 through 90, the suggestion, it's item number 6, line 78, all outside entrances to multifamily dwellings shall provide protection to the immediate area in front of said entrance from the weather. Reads much better, and that was a recommendation from Dave.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments about the multifamily special permit by the document?
Mr. Chairman, it's Craig.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Charlene, I like the idea of the numbers along the side for each line. It makes it very easy to follow, refer to other people. So I'm going to look at lines 68 and 69, item 4. A habitable room in a multifamily dwelling unit shall have a minimum floor area of less than 120. Should that be no less than?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dave actually mentioned that the last thing, it should be of not less than.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else on any part of this section 2? Okay, and I think that's it for that document. Is it, Charlene?
It is. I don't know if the board is ready, willing, or able to vote to send it to the selectmen during the public hearing process, whether or not the letter be on the May, or the September Town Meeting or not. I do not know. They may ask that this be pushed off until May. But I don't know if you're comfortable at this point, if anybody is, to make a motion to report to the selectmen for the public hearing process.
Do we have anybody who wishes to do that?
Sure, it's Craig. I'll make a motion that we refer this document as written with the modifications that were agreed to at this meeting to the selectmen for their approval.
Start the public hearing process.
Oh, just, yeah, thank you, just start the public hearing.
I can. Okay, and do I listen to Craig's motion?
Alan Peterson, second.
Alan Peterson, second. Okay, and we'll have a roll call vote. Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Dave Harris?
Dave Harris, aye.
Joe McPraland, aye. Mary Mazlofsky?
Mary Mazlofsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
And Bill Stoltz? Bill Stoltz, aye. Okay, so we have a 7-0 vote to, I guess, to move it to the Board of Selectmen, right? Wasn't that the motion?
Yep, yep. So I'll get them and see what happens.
Didn't, didn't Bill vote no?
The vote was 7-1-0.
I thought I heard Bill Stoltz say aye. Am I wrong, Bill? I said aye. I'm sorry.
I have to get in.
Seven, 7-1, all right. All right, how about this draft zoning change, Charlene?
No, you already did that.
Okay, I thought so. All right, we have anything else?
The last two items are the board reorg and the briefings, whatever the board.
Okay, I'm going to move the reorg to August 11th.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, your August 11th meeting has the potential of being much longer than tonight's meeting.
Yeah, I'm moving to August 25th. That doesn't make any difference when we organize. Last time I looked, I think I controlled the agenda. I wonder some days. Okay, anything else anybody wants to be heard on this evening?
No, sir.
Just for motion, Bill Guerin? I'm moved.
Second.
Mary Mazlofsky, who's the second?
Craig Chadwick, second.
Okay, Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McPraland, aye. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
And Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
And Mary Mazlofsky, aye.
Craig Chadwick.
And Craig Chadwick, aye.
I called him.
I am.
Okay. All right, very good. Next meeting, August 11th, according to me, Charlene.
Dave, go ahead.
Oh.